I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance. The S.A.P.A.'s slash Second Amendment slash gun sanctuary ordinance.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good morning, everyone. Today is January the 19th, 2021. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Camden County Commission to ordinance.
Greg Haste.
Here.
James Gohegan.
Here.
Tony Williams.
Here.
Okay. Entertaining motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay. Um, first thing up on the agenda is sheriff's security system renewal. Anybody from sheriff's office here? Sign these minutes. Security system renewal, sheriff, Dave.
That's the alarm system we put in a couple of years ago with the panic buttons. A two-year contract. It's a, it's a research. It changed all the batteries.
Have you guys reviewed that?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with it?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any, uh...
According to Donna, uh, she doesn't have one in her office.
She just didn't take it from the old house.
Oh, okay.
They were supposed to take them when they moved and some of them didn't take... You got yours, did you?
No, I think Donna came and got them and they're over there. They're just not installed.
Okay, you just...
Well, I've got mine.
They're portable? They're just taped. You just took them.
Yeah, I mean, you just put them somewhere.
Right.
Um, well, I mean, this is a renewal on the contract is 391375. Anyone want on? Okay. You get that or...
Yeah.
All right. I would entertain a motion with regard to security system renewal for the sheriff.
I'll second.
That's going through forever. I'll move to approve it. On recommendation of your department.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next thing up on the agenda is, uh, a sheriff bid opening with, uh, water well... Okay, we've got a water well postponed until 2/9/20. Uh, this has to do with, uh, a bid on behalf of Camden County Sheriff's Department for a new well at the firing range, and this did not get run in the paper. And so, we're gonna have to postpone it until February the 9th until it's been published.
That's fine.
Okay. Um, I need a motion back, but, um...
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. So, we're gonna get that published. Uh, next thing up is with regard to H.R. matters and...
Greg, there's a second bid for the retaining wall. I have here.
Oh, there are more than one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Uh, we have more than one bid open. So, the second one is for...
It's for, uh, a retaining wall at the firing range. We have seen one bid for it here.
Okay. Was that properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Tony, were you aware there was some A bids?
Yeah, I didn't know if there was any bids coming in, but I knew we bid it.
Do you want to table it or do you want to approve it? We're good any way you want to go.
I don't think anybody will bid it, obviously. No. No, we're good with that.
We've had, we've had a few calls, but nobody's, nobody's followed through with... We backed up one out of those calls, followed through and actually shown out. It's, it's pretty sizable.
Okay. You guys comfortable with it, with what you've got?
Yes.
Okay.
I wonder...
Okay. I would, uh...
Tony, you had something to say.
No, I just wanted to add, just so you know, it's not for the firing range. It's at the firing range. It's for the dogs.
Okay. Okay. Um, any discussion?
I talked to him about it last week. Sounds good.
Okay.
I moved to approve the bid to the old Garry concrete for firing range.
Those in favor? Motion carries. Uh, I assume that there will probably be a contract for me to sign. This is just a proposal. I assume we'll be, I assume we'll be getting a contract.
We will.
All right. Uh, next thing up, uh, is Melissa here?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, basically, all, all this has to do with is contracts that were approved for a H.R. investigation and apparently there's gonna be substantial cost. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, it'll have to be bid.
Correct.
All right. Um, in fact, if that's the case, then I don't think there's much else we can discuss other than it'll have to be advertised in the paper and the whole ball of wax will have to be followed the way it usually is. Okay? Thank you. Uh, next thing up is approval of tax abatements. I'm just gonna look through. You should welcome to look through them. Make sure that we've got something on there that is explained, read and why. Those two do.
That's one bid?
Yeah. Okay. I would entertain a motion with regard to the tax abatements. All those in favor? That's all the regular items that we have. Next thing up, uh, is other business in the meetings and obviously... What's that?
Budget amendments.
Do you have a budget amendment?
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, we've got one.
Is Jimmy here? Okay. Swing away, Addie.
So, you've got three.
Well, we need to do these, we need to do these one at a time, so let's just swing away. Okay, this is a budget amendment. This is a change of moving materials into employee raises for, uh, three guys. Any discussion? A lot of entertaining motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next one up is, uh...
Is that the university extension?
That's the university extension, yeah.
What that is, is, you know, used to house them down the street down here. The building had a lot of issues.
Uh, it was getting so expensive to keep that building in decent shape.
It started to get mold in it. The HVAC system was falling apart. So, what we came up with was rather than, um, trying to put the money in to restore the building, we decided it'd be cheaper to just increase their budget technically so they could lease a place somewhere.
Where are they?
They've, I don't know, I haven't gone to see it. They just got moved in about a week or two ago. Is your email sent over? You may have emails from Michelle Prohl out there. You invited us all to come out and take a look at their new building. And such with that.
Is it in the city? I mean, where generally is it?
Yes, I believe it's in the city. I'm not sure.
And is that, how, how long is that?
Ten down here. Yeah, it's around here.
For you?
Yeah, maybe they're married here.
Okay. I'll say...
I'll move to approve the budget amendment.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
What's her last name? Roll?
Roll.
K.O.?
Hello?
Yeah.
James, it's on South 5. Just right before we get to the MFA, on the right.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Is that additional funding?
Yeah. It's additional funding in lieu of the building that we used to house them in.
I'm not sure what we're gonna do with that building. Um, from what the guys have said, it probably needs to be at a minimum completely gutted, if not torn down. So, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Okay. Last one is change L.E.S.T. Sheriff got a, a grant from the Village Four Seasons for, uh, employee raises, and he's outlined those in his budget amendment. Um, I would entertain a motion.
I'll second that.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. So, we got a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The peacefulness and tranquility you get from sleeping through a night's rain can be refreshing. Or a nightmare. Don't go insane. Call your friends in the roofing industry, Thompson Roofing and Reconstruction. Whether it's residential or commercial, we have an experience and knowledge to get the job done. Call us and have one of our Hague-certified staff members assist you with your roofing needs. Visit us online anytime at ThompsonRoofing.us or give us a call.
All right. Okay, we've got through the budget amendments, tax abatements. Um, next thing up is, uh, there was a request made to, uh, put this on the Constitutional Camden County on the agenda for a discussion. So, um, I'm opening up, uh, this particular item for discussion. Obviously, that's probably why everybody's here, so...
So, do you think Greg, that discussion is going to end in minutes or being closed before?
What's that?
Is that discussion gonna go in the minutes or being closed before?
It's being recorded. I mean, if we get...
I didn't know. Usually that's only in minutes, on other business, I'm just asking, so I don't know.
Yeah, no, we're gonna have it. We're gonna have, this is just discussion. So, we're not closing the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, you're gonna, basically, I want there to be a record that we're having a general discussion with regard to this proposed ordinance of a constitutional Camden County.
Well, it, it was Charlie. I don't know if you saw Charlie's revision and then my revision. It's a resolution, but the part dealing with the Second Amendment was, I, I wanted that to be an ordinance.
Okay. Um, you want...
Is that the only part we changed? Was the Second Amendment section?
No. Uh, I, there was some about, uh, just really didn't need to be in there about, um, libel and I just trimmed down some of that. Added, individuals have the rights to refuse directives or recommendations to take any vaccines associated with COVID-19. No business, church or organization can be shut down due to COVID-19. Keep in mind, these are resolutions.
What, would it be difficult for, to, to just read the whole thing to folks?
I'm sure most of them have seen it, but I can do it.
Would anyone like to hear it?
In its original format?
Yes.
Whatever form you're looking at.
Or whatever you just got edited.
Yeah.
Whatever you come up with.
All right. I just sent here.
So, this is, uh, a little bit of a combination of the part that, uh, kind of a compromise, I guess, from Charlie and me. I don't, did you guys look at the original at all?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you knew what that said?
Yeah.
And then Charlie's was, uh, pretty much very similar, but, uh, it didn't have anything pertaining to, like, shutdowns to COVID and vaccines and gun rights, which I thought were what the incoming administration people wanted. So, I made sure to, uh, add those because other than that, it was not at all what I had looked for. But, I mean, so there's a lot, you know, the, here's number one. All government of, of right originates from the people. All persons have a natural right to life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness and the enjoyment of their gains, of their, or, of their own industry. All persons are created equal and entitled to equal rights and opportunity. All individuals have a natural, natural and indefeasable right to worship Almighty God or not according to their own conscience. Uh, no authority can control or interfere with the rights of religious freedom and conscience. Uh, no person can be compelled to erect, support or attend any place or system of a religion. Uh, no law shall be passed impairing the freedom of speech, but every person shall be responsible for the abuses of this freedom under the principles of slander. Libel, libel and slander? So, I mean, that just seems like I would probably amend that to be that no law shall be passed impairing the freedom of speech, period. Uh, individuals have the right to peacefully assemble for their common good. No individual shall, shall be deprived of life, liberty or property without due process of law. Individuals shall be secure in their persons, papers, homes and effects without unreasonable searches and seizures. Individuals shall have the right to keep and bear arms in defense of his home and personal property. Uh, that had something to do with concealed carry, and I edited that one. Uh, private property shall not be taken for public use without compensation. Uh, I don't even know how I feel about that. Individuals have the right to refuse directives or recommendations to take any vaccine associated with COVID-19. No business, church or organization can be shut down due to COVID-19. The Health Department Director is not an elected physician. And the Health Department as a whole is not law enforcement. They may write, make recommendations, but do not have the authority in police businesses concerning COVID-19. And then the second part is from the Second Amendment Preservation Act. I couldn't get it to pull up right now, but it's in there. And basically, this is the part I would like to see be in ordinance. Uh, you can look up the originator of things, uh, from House... Uh, all federal acts, laws, orders, rules and regulations, whether past, present or future, within print, which infringe on the right, the people's right to keep and bear arms as guaranteed by the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. Article 1, Section 23 of the Missouri Constitution shall be invalid in this county, shall not be recognized by this county, are specifically rejected by this county and shall be considered null and void and of no effect in this county. Uh, and then it lists all the subsections for each part.
Excuse me, how do you spell that guy's name?
So, um, yeah, I mean, it's a very pro-Second Amendment. You know, it's being proposed at the state level, and I would make a motion that we put
Does anyone else, uh, wanna speak with regard to this particular matter?
Yeah, I, I made the request, and I'd like to talk about why I made it.
Okay.
Um, and I made it on the proposed ordinance, not on a revised resolution. Um, the way Jane's original ordinance stood, I mean, it's protected by the Tenth Amendment. Power is not delegated to the government by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states. Rest with the states or the people. There is absolutely nothing in the Constitution that delegates the power to the federal government to commandeer the resources of the state or municipality for enforcement of federal law. It doesn't exist. Um, it's been held up, you know, by, it's been affirmed by SCOTUS, um, several times, at least four that I know of. The most relevant to this situation would be the Prince versus United States case. Um, that had to do with the Brady background checks, uh, in the Brady Bill, and it mandated that local law enforcement must use their own resources and personnel to run FBI background checks on anybody purchasing a gun. Um, Jay Prince, the sheriff of, I believe it was Ravelli County in Montana, challenged that. Um, and said, "I'm not using my men. I'm not using my resources. I'm not using my county taxpayer dollars to enforce your federal program." The Supreme Court agreed with him.
Um... That's P.R.I.N.
That is, um, Jay Prince, uh...
Can you spell it?
Yeah, P.R.I.N.T.Z. And he was the sheriff of Ravelli, R.A.V.E.L.L.I. County in Montana.
I've got a couple cases like that.
I will, and I will say in the original language, it was more kind of thinking if we didn't have somebody like Tony Holmes as sheriff, you know, our children's children...
We won't eventually. We got county now.
Right.
We're lucky.
So, you know, I guess we can cross that bridge when we get there, but I, I get where they might have an issue with it as far as, like, they would have to report. I mean, I've talked to Tony about it a lot, which will, um, I get where they're coming from on that, and that's why I completely took all that out of there because, you know, right now we do have a Tony Holmes, so...
Yeah, we do. But the, the cool thing about the Prince versus U.S. case is right now, because of that case, 13 states don't participate in the immigration system. They have their own federal system. Um, you know, and I know one of the concerns that, let's address the 800 pound umbrella in the room here, and that's federal funding. You know, I know there's concerns that if we enact something like this, the federal government will say, "Nope, Tony, you can't have any grants for law enforcement." Okay? Um, I'm not 100% positive, but in April of 2020, just recently, um, what this ordinance is, is not really any different than the illegal immigration sanctuary cities. It's really not. You know, it's just instead of protecting illegal immigrants, we're protecting rights. Um, and there was a case that went in front of the U.S. Court of Appeals, Seventh District, um, where President Trump was attempting to withhold funds from immigration sanctuary cities. Um, the court ruled that requirements for enforcing federal immigration law could not be tied to law enforcement grants. So, I have to assume that there couldn't be any requirement on county, you know, to do this, that or the other thing and tie it to the law enforcement grants, but that's something that we would need to check out. You know, anyhow, we're, we're in trying times right now. We have a very liberal administration coming in, um, that signaled that they want mask mandates, that signaled that they want vaccine mandates, that signaled, um, you know, massive gun control. Don't buy these gun control policy pages like that long.
We will not pass a mask mandate in Camden County. We're not gonna do it.
We need protections against any federal mandate.
I was gonna say, pass protections. Don't tell us what you're not gonna do. Pass protection. I mean, you guys did shut the county down on the advice of the government here last April, so...
We need guarantee.
Yeah.
But if it's a federal mandate, you don't have a choice except to put back. Right.
The, the federal government doesn't really have the power to pass a national mask mandate.
Yes.
Only, that will only come... They didn't have the power to ban bus socks either, but they did that. They'll get power grab. We have to challenge it, and this is how we challenge it. We're just preparing for what you're hearing the same way.
Yeah, I understand.
We just fled by the Delaware. I think this is a great thing that we can do to protect ourselves because I don't want any one of you to have to go through the hell we just went through this last year. We lost our businesses. 60% of all small businesses in Delaware have gone. We had the food district, food distribution chain completely bumped off. We were standing in line for four hours straight to get food for our families because the shelves were empty. Guys, I can't even explain to you what the rest of this nation is going through right now. If there's anything we can do to protect us from having to do that again and from any of you having to go through what the rest of this world's going through right now, then we need to do it.
If I might add, another one is the anti-commander laws. Part of, um, it's absolutely the way it should be. Federal government cannot compel a local authority to enforce federal law. But also anti-commander also comes around to where what the local authority is willing to do. And I think that at this point, the Second Amendment Preservation Act that is going to be passed in, uh, in Washington or Jefferson City, uh, the sheriff here has been given a copy of it, and so have the sheriffs around in the following, the other counties. So, you can ask him what he thinks about it. But in that, in that, uh, provision, there is a, there's a little teeth. If a law enforcement officer in the state of Missouri were to enforce federal law, they could be, uh, held accountable for a misdemeanor and could be denied to ever be a law enforcement officer in the state of Missouri again. And I have to tell you, folks, as, as good as our law enforcement officers are, there are a bunch that are not that good, and they do want to use these federal laws, and they'll use them against us. And the bad part about taking any federal money or starting to get in the, in the hands of the federal government, taking their grant money, uh, helping them enforce laws, they now can control and tell you what to do. And that is one of the biggest things we have to prevent. And I believe that something like this right here in Camden County will not only tell other... And I believe that something like this, right here in Camden County, will not only tell other, the federal government and other officials that this is the way we see things should be, it also tells our local officials what it is the people actually want. And that is also what we're seeking, is to ensure that not only, again, there's going to be a change of sheriff, you know, X amount of years down the road, whatever, this is going to happen. So we need to have these proactive things in place that will help protect and secure Camden County. And I would hope that you pass what Mr. Gohegan has brought forward, probably in its original provisions. And I would add that there needs to be teeth in that ordinance that if any local Camden County official, in case that doesn't get passed at the state level, that any local law enforcement officer that assists in federal law enforcement of gun rights be held accountable and be removed from office or removed from their position.
Anyone else, folks?
Yep. Do we talk?
Okay. I wasn't going to say anything, but I'll jump in. Looking at this, there's, I think there's some issues here that people don't want to address. And one of the concerns I've seen is people are saying, "Oh, my God, what are we going to do? We're going to turn around and give all the power to our commissioners." Couldn't be further from the truth. If I'm not mistaken, you all took an oath, right, to uphold the Constitution of the state and the federal government. That's really all this is. We're asking them to put in writing that they're going to protect our rights as citizens in Camden County. We're not asking them to change anything about the Constitution of the state or the federal government. And I want to go on to say that this is not uncharted territory, folks. I mean, I've done a lot of research on this. Illinois has a huge problem. All of the money goes to Chicago, we know that, and yet all the money is generated south by all those farmers, all right? And what they've done, if you look at it, I think there's 22 counties in Illinois that have passed this same kind of ordinance, and they did it specifically because they're tired of Chicago telling everybody down in Springfield and all these other areas of Illinois, "Here's where your money's going to go, here's what we're going to do, and we're going to enforce these laws just because we feel like this is what we need." We, being Chicago, not the rest of us. And they're using the federal government as well. Also, a lot of you remember when they had the big gun grab taking place in Virginia? Those counties there did the exact same thing. Tony, I'm sure you're familiar with it. And those counties went ahead and applied the sanctuary counties specifically dealing with the gun issues. So the bottom line is here, folks, our Constitution gave us certain unalienable rights. We have a bill of rights that specifically lists those things that are protected, okay? And only thing, only addition I could make is, and this is an issue you might, guys might want to look at, as we're listing these things, our forefathers ran into the exact same problem. They got to the Ninth Amendment, you know, we had freedom of speech, religion, right down the line. They got to the Ninth one, and James Nash stood up and he said, "Hey," he said, "There's going to be things come up in the future we don't even know about." And there's, you know, if we continue this list, it'll go on forever. So that's why they came up with the Tenth Amendment and said, "If it's not in there, by God, it goes to the locals," all right? It's not in the, it's not in the US Constitution, it goes to the states. And in essence, this is what we're saying. You know, if it's not in the US Constitution or the state Constitution, then bottom line is Camden County's not going to comply with it. That make sense? All right? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Yeah, several questions. Obviously, you're hitting a lot of topics on here, right? You're talking about gun rights, you're talking about search and seizure. You're talking, I mean, this place.
Well, the first part is a resolution, and that's just more or less saying this is who we are.
I'm just saying, this thing is all over the place, right? It's not like one specific thing.
I don't know how to talk.
No, it's the Bill of Rights.
I've been talking about it for, ever since I was elected, so.
I know you've been talking about it, but I'm saying, like, you're, this one specific thing has so many legs on it, right? Like, you give it, you're talking about the police using it to go for search and, be able to keep a gun or something, right? What I'm saying is, aren't you opening this up to more things? If this, if all these rights are federally given to us?
No, no.
They're not given to us.
The state has rights.
God gives them rights.
Take your mask off. I can't hear you.
What I'm saying is, if, just like this whole EPA thing, you guys are talking about not wanting to piss off the federal government or whatever.
That's not in.
But as soon as this, as soon as they make a mandate and you say, "We're not going to do that," when somebody was saying, "Funding," what is the backup for that funding mechanism? How are we going to fund things if they do pull that?
I'm pretty sure.
Like, what happens if we do that? I'm just saying, what is the backup? I'm all for freedom. I'm all for that.
Like any family or any company or anything of that nature that lose the revenue stream, you have to make priorities, and you have to pick out what it is you are not going to do. We don't have this deep pockets to just pull from whatever, and we certainly shouldn't have Uncle Sam up there that we can pull money from, because every penny that comes from the federal government has huge strings attached. And they will come down here, they're bidding and do what they, have you do what they want you to do, and that is the string that we've got to cut. And if it comes down to funding this county, then we have to prioritize, folks. We can't have certain roads laid in beautiful gravel that don't maybe need to be there. We have other things that don't need to be done that maybe we can look at ways to cut in our own house, and it's kind of like what we would like to see done at the school. Cut the dead gum federal government out of us, and that cancer will be gone.
You can't sacrifice.
You cannot sell us like slaves because they need a grant. There are strings attached to every single grant. There's an MOU that spells it out. I know you may need the money, but our rights, we elected you to uphold the Constitution, not you. You represent us, he shouldn't amend what you write. We need to be able to see it and not have a word or two here or there that changes the whole impact of what you want. Let us see it, put it out online, on your website, so we can see it. When there's an amendment made that comes in, the day it's voted, we want to see it first so we can be in here to speak into it. So I respectfully ask for that be an option, that we don't know, if we don't know what's been changed, and we think we're getting one thing, but he does another. We elected you, not him. So the county attorney should not be altering documents that you bring forth without the public being able to see and understand what he's done. And I ask respectfully that you remember, you took a vow to the Constitution. We need you to represent us and make us a sanctuary county, and that's what he's asked for, and that's what we want.
Oh, you know, that's a good, that's a good.
Guys, we did just take $5.4 million, and I attended as many meetings as I could, and some people were here too, but when that money went to be spent in this county, it was a rush, it seemed like, and nobody was here to talk about that federal money that was spent. And it was spent, some of it here in this county, and some of it went to other places because the services weren't in this county. So we got to think a little bit bigger than just our county, I think, at times, too. And I know, I respect everybody's thoughts in here, but the lady talking about the lines in food places, it's not just because that store didn't have the food, there's a whole line, there's a production line, they shut down, it's a global market, guys. I mean, I don't know. If we try to live on Camden County, we're here.
Stacy, can you tell me what the revenue was this year from real estate?
$1.1 billion, I get it, I read too. I'm just saying.
Yeah, but that's, that's the point. If this goes into flight, there will be more people like us who flock to this area because we don't want to.
For what work? Where are they going to work? Where are they going to work?
We have businesses, we grew with us.
What businesses? Where are they going to work? You have a high unemployment. The lake, where are you going to work? At a gas station? Where are you going to work?
I own three phone businesses.
That's great, I'm glad, but I'm just saying, like, where are the people going to work? We sit in here and talk about it. Where are these people going to work?
We are the citizens of this county. We need to have a civil conversation about this.
Crazy talk.
And I'm just going to say this one time, and I just keep it listed, limited, because I'm here to listen to you. But when we got that notification out of the blue with regard to the EPA putting us on the endangered waterway list, there are people in this room that know I made this exact prediction probably as far as 10 years ago. And there's been a conversation I've had with an individual here recently, was involved in the Chamber of Commerce and some things like that, that it might not be a good idea for us to have a entire countywide sewer system and an entire countywide water system. Maybe somewhere down the road, that's happening, but the sequence of events that I've been concerned about for a long time is the EPA putting us on a list that says that we've got problems with our water. The next thing that'll happen is some federal judge will mandate, just like they mandated the construction of a courthouse. Some judge mandated the construction of that courthouse, and all the citizens had to pay for it because a judge mandated. A judge, federal judge, can mandate a central sewer system.
Why, a federal judge can come down and build it, too.
Well, my point being, this is as far as I'm going to, you need to pay attention to what's going on and don't take it at face value, because all it takes now, that we're going to be placed on this list, is a federal judge's order, and if we have to build that system, it will be settled on a tax bill for everyone in this county. Anyone that owns a parcel, it's looked up, they have to pay. So this is, it's just advanced stuff. We're not there yet, but we didn't, just as an example, when the 1,300 homes were going to be tore down on the Lake of the Ozarks, we didn't find that, about that until after it happened, and we had to fight to change that. So this is the next thing coming down the pipe. I hope that it doesn't turn out the way I anticipate that it will, but there needs to be more people in the room that are aware. Yes?
I would, I think it would be helpful. I mean, we seem to have this energy working towards thinking that some of you are against this recommendation in its original form, and I don't know that I've heard that from the commissioners, so, so we know that Commissioner Gohegan brought it forward, but what's, you're in your view of this recommendation? I mean, you're listening to our input, but surely you've read it and you have some sort of opinion, because we don't want to push back against you if you're, you know, getting on board, and that may be.
In short, for me, I'm sitting here listening to you guys, and if what we are proposing is within the guidelines of the Constitution of the United States, which we were, we were sworn to uphold, if it's within the guidelines of the Constitution of the state of Missouri, which we were sworn to uphold, I don't have a bit of problem.
That's what I was thinking.
But I would like to add that whatever we do, reviewed by some legal counsel, whether it's somebody else or, just to make sure that if we're going to adopt something in this county, that it will pass muster in case we're spending money on litigation somewhere down the road.
Bill.
I support it 100%. I did. It looks to me like the first that's come to people.
You know, things have the potential to get very ugly nationwide in the very near future.
Bill says?
I was intending to just make one point, but you're making me make two. The point is, there was nothing in the original proposal that says we'll never cooperate with the federal government. It simply said that if we see an abridgement of our rights, that it gets referred to the commission to help make that decision, so that we don't have any loose cannons operating in the county. We speak with a unified voice. The second thing is what you mentioned about it needs to go past a legal authority for muster. I understand that. I used to be on the, on the board at Lynn Creek, and we did that sort of thing, but any kind of a bold move, if you submit it to an attorney, will get watered down. Because that's the role of an attorney, so we have to be careful not to let the attorneys run things.
Yes.
From my point of view, of course, my point is, Bill, something that I have a concern about is if we pass this, I want to be very comfortable with the language in terms of, because effectively what we're doing is getting to a point where we pass an ordinance and then we're challenged, and the county becomes involved in a litigation with regard to it, that we are in a position of where we can defend our view. So, I think, no, look, we're all for, I think we're all on the same page, we all agree.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you, sort of.
Well, I mean, you got, you got, what, 50 people in this room or 75? Every one of them's going to have a little bit, a different point of view, and, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be some people in the room that have a substantial different point of view.
I think we all know, all of us who've been in business know how our attorneys operate, and they're there to advise us not to do something stupid. I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that's purely stupid until a situation arises, and then we can go back to an attorney and say what to do about this. Kind of like the same thing with the artwork. That's kind of the scenario that happened.
Yeah, we're fortunate about that artwork, that shortly after we had our battle with them, that a Supreme Court ruling came down with regard to a 50-foot-high cross in Pennsylvania.
Sounds like the ultimate attorney.
And the Supreme Court affirmed that it can stay, even though it was on, I believe, city grounds on that particular case. So, most of all this stuff, I, I mean, I don't know where Don stands, but most of all this stuff I agree with, it's just I want to make sure that, because I can see us somewhere down the road, the way things are going federally, that we could be in a position to have to spend county funding to litigate. Jim, what do you think? This has been a shock. I agree with you. What you said earlier, as long as I'm not violating my oath to the state constitution and the federal constitution, I'm good with it. We're not asking you to violate that. What we're saying is, we want you to go on record as saying you support those things. Anything outside of that, we're saying, it reverts back here. Now, let me give you a quick history lesson, all right? Quick history lesson. She's in a colony, she says, "Listen, okay, 1789, we're building this new government." And she says, "Our colony's very religious, and I don't see a damn thing in here about freedom of religion, and I'm not going to sign your constitution unless you put something in there." And here's Madison going, "Damn it." And he said, "If I put something in there, it'd be all right?" "Sure." "Okay, so I'll put it in." This guy here, he said, "Hey, we made all the guns." And there's nothing in here about us getting to keep our guns, and I'm not going to sign this damn thing and become part of this union unless you put something in there. "All right, fine, will you sign this?" "Yeah." "Okay, so I had it." Freedom of speech. She's the one that was writing all these nasty articles going up and down the coast of those ships. And she turned around and she says, "I don't see anything about freedom of press, freedom of speech, I'm not going to join. We'll just go our own way, we'll become a separate country." And so, "Fine, can I give you something we can do?" "Yes." "All right, I'll add it." And that's exactly what happened. They added 10 things. Those 10 things didn't come from the federal government, they came from the people. They went to those 13 colonies and said, "What's it going to take to make this happen? To make us a United States? To give us a constitution?" And the people said, "We want to make damn sure there are restrictions on the federal government, and for that matter, on our state governments." So those amendments, those amendments are not things that the federal government gave us. Those amendments are restrictions that we put on the federal government, and that's exactly what we're asking to happen here. We're saying, "We'll abide by the Constitution of the state and the federal government, but you go outside of that, we're going to tell you to stick it." That's all I can say.
Look, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say that as far as granting an attorney and all of this, our documents that our country was founded upon is all the legitimacy that we need to move forward in this, and we don't need anybody else to affirm it any more than the documents that founded this very country have already given us. And to say that the federal government determines whether we can do this, that, or the other thing, or what people have to say about what we're moving forward with, what really matters is what this country is founded on, it'd be really advisable to continue to actually treat the documents as the powers that they are instead of disregarding the powers those documents have in America.
I want to do you first, then Sean.
Thompson Roofing and Reconstruction is dedicated to bringing quality roofing services to the Lake of the Ozarks. We are committed to providing excellent customer service and making sure our customers' expectations are met every step of the way. If you need roofing services in Osage Beach or Lake Ozark or one of the surrounding lake communities, give us a call today. Thompson Roofing and Reconstruction, we're here to help.
You know, we also, I think you're very right about the EPA, that's going to be a very serious problem, and they tried it with FERC, and we're going to have to fight that hard. And they tried it with FERC, and we're gonna have to fight that hard.
Well.
And, and it, I don't know where it's gonna manifest itself.
An estimated cost just, I just ballparked it, and this could be off wildly, but just ballparked, you're probably looking at six hundred and sixty million dollars.
Well, here's the thing, if the EPA says that's what we have to do, we still don't have to do it. And if the federal court says, you have to put it in the system, well, we really don't have to do it. Federal judges have been wrong before, the Supreme Court has been wrong before, and the Fugitive Slave Act and a couple of other things. So, they're not always right just because they're a lawyer. And when it gets right down to it, people are the right. And in this particular county, and the surrounding counties that make up Lake of the Ozarks, we are the people, we are the ones that wanna make it right. And just because a federal judge says that we would have to build this system, again, I don't remember what, what president was it that told that Supreme Court justice to, well, go down and enforce it then? Oh, yeah, I put you on the spot, sorry about that, but, but it, it has happened before. Cat, yes, Cat told the Supreme Court, well, you go do it then. And of course, they can't do that, they don't have the authority and they don't have anything to do with it. And, you know, we are getting into an ugly position, and I don't know, the founders gave us the Second Amendment for a reason. And I was thinking about that, because they also say that you can't have an insurrection. You can pull out the military to fight an insurrection against the federal government, right? Well then, what's the purpose of that Second Amendment? Maybe the necessary, the security of a free state, to keep our state, our individuals state-free from our federal government. And when our federal government tries to come down and say, well, you're gonna do this, and we say, well, no, we're not going to do this. Well, if they wanna bring down the FBI and US Marshals, that's why we have law enforcement, and that's why we have firearms. I know that sounds ugly, and that's raising it to the highest bar you can get, but one day, folks, we're gonna have to be ready for that bar.
Actually, that, that day was last year. It was already there because we received a text message from the governor's office with regard to whether or not we wanted, all the commission would have to have said is, yes, we want National Guard down here. Twice they did, to enforce any ordinance that we put in place. So.
We're a rowdy bunch.
So then we have to worry about our own state government, obviously Governor Parsons is.
Which places? Ordinance.
Which makes us a lawyer.
We're in, we're in.
So, this particular commission, the commission that was in place last year, we said no on two different occasions to the National Guard being here to enforce whatever we put in place. Folks, I don't wanna be like Custer. When we had a meeting in here a year ago about exactly this time, and the people in our healthcare industry were saying that one to three people out of Camden County were gonna die, it was pretty scary, and we had to make that decision. I didn't don't wanna go off charging off over the hill like Custer and then figure out I was in trouble. Having, having thirty days to just see what, what was gonna happen and how bad it was gonna be, we all pretty well thought we were gonna do about thirty days and find out, because if we don't stop that thing in thirty days, it ain't gonna be stopped. It didn't get stopped in thirty days, it just ran through our nation. And, and fortunately for us, the death rate wasn't one to three percent, and I'm very thankful for that, although I have had some very good personal friends die from it. Those same personal friends were people that said, Greg, you've gotta stay open. This has been tough. So, you know, your, your idea about, you know, them coming and enforcing?
Yeah.
I hope we don't get there. Our nation's in mass. Sean, you're next.
I was just, if these are all, and I read, I read it, James, like you put online, and I'm not, I'm just trying to be the devil's advocate here, because I see it from different angles from everything, because there's, obviously everybody in this room probably has a yes opinion, but there's probably people that have no's too, and it just seems like if these are rights that are already given to us, why are we enacting more laws? I'm, I'm a person that doesn't like.
Tomorrow's a new day, Cobra.
You what?
Tomorrow is a different presidency, and that's what I'm worried about.
They don't care about the laws.
So the party that doesn't like laws is creating laws, is what you're saying?
They disregarded laws all year last.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
So, what's, what's.
Well, let's hope that.
We stayed open and we were, you know, slayed in the national press, and we.
That was obvious.
Let's just open that image. We are who we are.
We are, but I'm saying, all of our products are not made here, we don't have like gates, our products are shipped in, everything's shipped in, right? What do we make in this county?
Yeah, I don't, what does that have to do with you?
We make fun. Well, I'm just saying, like, you guys are referring to like, like, okay, we were closed, or we didn't close, and the world came running here. But there's, there's way, there's a lot of things that were, are affected with that. Yeah, we, we were a tourist place, we don't have industry, like.
Our industry is.
More people are coming, more stuff like that.
What I'm saying is, if you don't have these other businesses that have been shut down, like, there, there are places shut.
Let's just go one, I, I will just go right through.
But I'm saying, there's places that say shut up, okay.
I think I, I think I can address, probably if you and Stacey can address kinda what's happening here as much as anybody can. We're both in the real estate business, I may have a unique perspective, because I'm also building property here. A hundred and four units that are already spoken for, for new rentals. We do not have enough housing here, but the beauty of that is, that's gonna create jobs. That's where all this work is made. And there are people begging for good employees. I have some contractors, they're behind because they don't have good people. We have people that are moving here, and they're all talking about how nice it is that we're open, that we have our liberties, that we have our freedoms, and that they're, they're, they can be outside with their children, even if, even if there is this horrible, you know, pandemic, they can still be outside playing with their kids, they can be on the way.
Going to school.
Going to school. There's all kinds of things here that they have that are not in cities like Chicago, Des Moines, Iowa, I have people from Colorado, California. I can't tell you how many people are here coming as refugees. It is incredible, and they don't give a damn what they're gonna do for work. They'll, they'll figure it out, most of them have.
It's driven small businesses to move here.
We brought all of our businesses with us.
They're, they're coming here.
And market businesses will follow too.
Absolutely.
Manufacturing will follow.
Isn't there one already in Lake Ozarks?
Yeah, we have, we have large companies coming here. That's why they're coming. You left us open, and I, I know a lot of people, everyone else wanted you to do what everyone else was doing, because you left us open. I ask people, why are you here from Oregon? Like, do you have people that live here? No. Then why are you here? I saw you on the news.
Yeah, I saw you.
As simple as that, and there's so many.
They don't care.
Which is gonna bring a lady.
Yes, sir.
Hi, so, we moved here five years ago. My, my wife and I, we both work from home, we always have, we had the privilege of being able to go anywhere in America. And we spent years looking all over the country, and we landed on Lake of the Ozarks. We came here, we visited, and we found that the values that this community held are the same ones that really mattered to us. And what this gentleman was saying about what's at stake here, the way that we, we avoid a catastrophe is by passing local ordinance that restricts the power of the government. That's the only way.
Several things I wanna say. Number one, I believe in freedom. When you shut down all these restaurants, all these businesses, you're not stopping this virus, you're only delaying it. It's still there. All you're doing is just stretching it out and you're killing business. I personally feel like if you have a business and you wanna open, open. If you're not comfortable going there, don't go.
That's right.
Look at all these restaurants that have suffered, and the bars, and, and all these other businesses nationwide, it's bringing this country down. Take a look at Sweden. Sweden didn't close down, and, and they survived quite well, because there again, you cannot just shut down these businesses, it's still there when you open it back up. How long are you gonna do this? That's all I gotta say.
I agree with every word of that. Yes, sir.
I used to be a fed, okay? I was in the military and retired. And when they order you to do something federally, you do it unless it's an unlawful order. We have an act, because we have our protection right over here. He's a sheriff. He's an elected official, he can enforce the laws, he can keep the feds out, but he needs the tools to do it. We gotta, we gotta think, rethink this whole idea about the feds. When you talk about how much they're gonna charge us if we, and what they're gonna do to us, you know, it takes like twenty-five years to get something built if the feds do it. You can put a businessman up there as president, and he can get it done in a year. He can move, you know, the embassy into Jerusalem, which they talked about for years and years. A joke that used to be in Russia was that the dam is gonna be finished. Well, a dam started twenty years ago, and the feds still never got it finished. It's called inferred authority, and I've been on that end, where you order some civilian to do something for you, and you tell them where you came from. I'm a fed. Oh, I'll do it right away. That's why we have a mask. There's not masks in these rooms right now, these are free people. They have responsibility, they know how far they can distance someone, they know they're not supposed to put their hands in the mud and then go touch someone or anything, they're responsible people. The government works for us, and the bump stop here. And that's why things like EPA, that is great, that you did something about that.
Well, he didn't do anything about it yet, I'm just telling you it's coming.
You got the backing for it, you can see a lot of it right here. And that's who the man we back right now to protect us. And he's gone, who's gonna protect us? We gotta make sure that it's in our constitution.
I, I'm just, you're thinking back to when Tony was on CNN with Donald Lemon, Tony and Chris. And the look you put on Donald's face was, was tremendous, because you told him, you know, this, this isn't my responsibility, this is not, you know, it's, freedom is not a crime in Camden County. Okay? And I think the, the ordinance in its original format basically reaffirms what Tony said on, on Donald Lemon's show. It's, it lays a foundation, it protects Tony, as well as protecting the citizens of Camden County. When, when Joe Biden decides to enforce the bump stop ban, which he can easily do, and they say, hey, Tony Helms, we need you to issue a warrant for this person in your county that we know has bump stop, you know, we've got that ordinance to protect Tony. We've got that ordinance to protect the people of Camden County. And I think the ordinance, just in its original format, you know, like I said at the beginning, the Tenth Amendment, and it's been confirmed by I, and by Jim, there is nothing in the Tenth Amendment that, or in the constitution that gives the power to the federal government to commandeer the resources of our county, period. You know, and that's, all that needs to be said. And the power rests at the local level.
Okay, we've got, young lady, you're next.
Thank you. You said you support the ordinance? Do you support James's or Mr. McElie's?
Uh, to be honest with you, I, I would really like to have an opportunity to have someone outside to look at it in terms of its constitutionality. I think we're gonna be okay with it, but I wanna make sure it's clean when it's done.
Why don't we call out the founding fathers and have them check it? Because they didn't have a freaking lawyer to look over those documents, I'm just saying.
I just, I, I am.
Don't you have the passage today to have the protection of the county?
Uh, we're, we really don't, we're planning on passing anything today. We just wanted, I mean, all you folks are here, I wanna hear what you got to say.
Can I invite a seller attorney to look at it? I've got a great one. He's the top Silverado's attorney in the state of Missouri, his name is David Rowland.
I agree. Time is up. He's a constitutional, actually a constitutional.
He is a constitutional attorney.
And he's excellent.
The world changes.
David Rowland.
David Rowland, R-O-L-A-N-D. Okay, three days from now, the world changes.
There's a time, there's a time Georgia, Kennesaw, Georgia, everybody needs to research it, they actually made an ordinance that a gun was required in every head of households in that city in Georgia, because their crime rates were so high. You know what happened when they made an ordinance that a gun had to be put in every single household? Now, not every single household did it, but crime that was on the rise, there was a sub, suburb of Atlanta, it went down to two, because it's still very, very low. Ordinances like this can be passed, refer to Kennesaw, Georgia, because they did it. And they did it in objection to an ordinance that was passed in Illinois that was later rendered unconstitutional, that was a gun ban in whatever county that county threw an ordinance. But look at Kennesaw, Georgia, they required a gun in every household, and the crime rate, the rate dropped tremendously.
So the thing happened in every city where they passed the serial carry permit.
So I just wanna talk about a few things. With regard to businesses, businesses staying open, I don't think anybody has the right to tell you to close your business. The public is the judge and juror, jury. They think it's unsafe, or they think that they shouldn't be out, they won't go out. But if the people wanna go out and they want to patronize that business, they need to have the ability to do that. And so, in, in my eyes, it's that simple. The public are the judge and jury of the economy. You're gonna spend your money where you wanna spend it, when you wanna spend it. Second of all, everybody's been patting Tony on the back. I'm gonna pat Tony on the back too. Tony was my CCW instructor, and I can assure you that there's not a person that has, this man will have a gun in his possession at any time, including the shower. You think I'm kidding? Tony, am I lying?
Tony or not.
All right. That's who he is.
That's what Saglus is for.
So, I'm saying that just to give you an illustration, that he is who he says he is, and we are fortunate to have him in this position, especially when they're coming after our rights. Now, there's several people in the room that know who I am, I'm not gonna go into that, but I wanna go back to when we relicensed the dam at the Lake of the Ozarks. Greg kinda made reference to the thirteen hundred homes that they were gonna make us tear down. Private property, tear it down. This is, we have seen overreach here before, we got that stopped, and it took a lot of work to do that. And one person didn't do it, it was, it was a group effort. There's a lot of people in this room that were involved with that, okay? I wrote a document called the Coordinated Land Use Plan that specifically addressed every point of the document, of the relicensing document, but did it in the light of Camden County. It never had to be filed, because when they saw it, they said, we don't really wanna deal with that, what we, what do we have to do to get that done? And we had a community group that worked with them, and guess what? We didn't tear anything down. Not only did we do that, we got things in place where we could get land deeded to those people if they went, there's always a process, but we saved those people's property, we saved their investment. This is the same type of thing. For anybody that says, well, all you're doing is reaffirming the Bill of Rights, well, guess what? We had to reaffirm our land rights. You know, we've had to do this before, and so that's the reason that this has to happen. And it is as simple as just the Bill of Rights, okay? Because that's what it is. So, that being said, you know, and I understand where Greg's coming from too on the litigation. You don't wanna burn a ton of county funds litigating something if you don't have to, but the other side of it is, is that if push comes to shove, you might have to. Okay? So, there's a line in the sand somewhere, and these guys are the ones that decide where that line is in the sand, hopefully with our input. And also, I'm just gonna go with regard to the 303D thing, you know, there was a clean water, I'm about to call it a clean water group down here, it was headed by the late Greg Gagnon, he used to be the head of Central Bank. That group has tons, tons of information showing why our lake doesn't belong on a 303D list. We're going on for nitrogen and phosphorus, I won't get into all of that, if we go on. But part of it is, is we need the liaison as a county, whether it be the wastewater department, the commission, whoever gets delegated to do that, we have to make sure that we are liaising constantly with DNR, making sure that they're the ones that have primacy. We do not have primacy.
I've got a great relationship with Department of Natural Resources.
So, the rumor is, and I haven't had the ability to check it out yet, is that one of the reasons we're where we're at is because DNR either A, didn't file, or B, misfiled. of the reasons we're where we're at is because DNR either A, didn't file, or B, misfiled. Paperwork, testing, and other things that have put us further up in this process. So, we need to try to work together. There's a lot of people in here I know that do great research.
I can make a call. I mean, I've got the director for our area's number, I know her very well.
Well, I've, I've. I've already had the conversations and the reason why they're proposing that we be on the list is due to a couple of, they check this stuff every two years. And there was a couple of years where we had major flows out of Truman to the Lake of the Ozarks. And basically what the DNR is saying, what Ameren is saying, what the feds are listening to, is that because of those outflows, it caused a elevated level on Lake of the Ozarks. And specifically, they are anticipating that we will probably come off that list unless we have big flows again.
Well, and the reason why those flows, the reason why those flows caused that is that the nitrogen, phosphorus levels in our lake come 95% from agricultural runoff.
And so, at any rate, that's where we're at on that, but you are correct, the incoming administration, in the previous Obama administration, we, they, they basically issued an executive order taking control of all the water that comes from the skies. And they determined that if you own a piece of property and you put a culvert on your property, if you don't have a EPA permit, $10,000 fine the first time. The day Donald Trump got into office, within a few days, he signed a, an executive order rolling that back. And so, I anticipate that that will be back in place within a couple of weeks that we're gonna have to be dealing with. And what this has to do with folks is the waters of the United States. Prior to Obama, the waters of the United States were the navigable rivers of this nation. Under the Obama administration, the waters of the United States became any waters that run into the navigable rivers of the United States, which basically affects the rainwater coming out of the sky. So, the federal government, through executive action, took specific control of your property and your property rights by claiming that whatever you do on your property has an effect on federal waters, therefore we have the authority. That's a fight that is coming, and it's coming probably sooner rather than later. Lake of the Ozarks is a target because we were on it. And I've had one particular individual tell me whenever I brought this up, I took a little bit of flack from making a stand on this right away when I heard about it. But one particular individual, who I will not name, said, "Well, maybe it's a good thing that we have a count-wide sewer system. Maybe we would have more, more capability here if we put all that in to expand our economy." So, it's just a difference in points of view. Right now, a lot of politicians can say one thing or the other. This is my saying from 15 years ago. Fish don't lie, politicians do. And the fish say we're clean. So, at any rate, I think that's coming down the road. This is part of our work. Jim? One more time. Jordan, you'll be there. Tying into what you guys are talking about, this whole EPA thing, because I think we're kinda getting the cart in front of the horse here, is, you know, what happens if, if we pass this and are they gonna come with all these restrictions? When everybody leaves here today, I want you to go to Google, pull up a map of the railroads in the United States in 1860. Just look at it. Nationwide map. And you know what you're gonna see? All of the northern states are covered with railroads. But guess what? In the south? Two or three. Texas, zero, zero railroads. You know why? You know why? Because the feds came in and said, "We're gonna build you a railroad. This is gonna be good for you. We're gonna manifest your water for you." Right? Same kinda thing. And you know what Texas said? "Hell, no. As soon as you get in here and you build this railroad, you'll have control of it, you'll have control of our people." And they said, "We're not gonna do it." Pull that up, that's all I ask. 1860, the railroad map. And look who said, "We'll comply and who won't." There you go. You're next, sir.
You know, you just referenced executive order by past presidents. You know, this is why we need this action today. We have new president coming tomorrow, they have over 100 executive orders. We need action by our commission to protect us. You guys can go back, you can have it looked at, but I think you guys should bring it up as soon as possible. Vote on it and protect this county.
Yes.
May I say something real quick? There is one little concern that I personally have, and you guys might too, in the wording. And it's, and it's just this, that I know oftentimes it's said that these businesses shouldn't be shut down due to COVID-19. A lot of times it's said due to COVID-19. We don't, COVID-19 is just coronavirus of 2019. What about coronavirus of 2021? Like, it needs to be more broad.
Good point. Mutating.
I love the vaccine thing.
Totally different.
We talked about, like, the sheriff's office having grants from the federal government and the school district gets grants as well. Are those grants, when they are proposed to the government, ever put online or somewhere where we can actually read what's in the grant and what their responsibilities are going to be? If not, they should be, so we can help them make the decision whether or not they should get a grant.
Well, the sheriff's office has a lot of the grants and, and, Chris, you.
You want me to go ahead and answer this?
Yeah.
Okay, so I do write a lot of the grants here. The wonderful thing about the grants is we see what stipulations are before we even apply for them. One of the biggest contributing factor that we do is how much do we owe the federal government if we're gonna get this grant? And it's something Tony and I have to sit down and look at, you know, how much, how much are, what kinda strings are attached to this grant? And typically, there are grants, I'm not gonna lie, there are grants out there that say, "Okay, if you have this grant, you're gonna have to do this and this and this and this." One of those is the bulletproof vest partnership. So, we got a grant for bulletproof vests for officers because they're about $800 to $1,000 apiece. I can't afford $90,000 a year, or every three years, for officers to get vests. So, we get these grants through the BJA. One of the strings attached to it was you have to have a policy that says you will wear your vest. That is a concession we were willing to make because, hey, if I'm going ahead and having my officers and buying them vests, then I expect them to wear them. But there are some that says, you know, you'll take a policy on this stance or this stance. And we sit down and said, "Okay, Tony, here, here's where we're at. What do you wanna do with it?" And some of them don't even make Tony. Some of them's like, "Ah, there's just no way I would even consider a grant like that." So, all the grants are online. You can go to the cops hiring grant and, we don't have, well, we do have grants, but we don't have a bunch of them. I mean, the ones we have are like the domestic violence investigator, it's through the state. Majority of the grants we get are through the state. Now, let's fast forward. Federal funding gives some of those money to them. But there's not a lot of strings attached to the ones we get because it's just, I don't wanna be behold to the federal government on what we're doing. Plus, I don't want them to dictate how we're gonna do our law enforcement here. So, we get the ones that have least or no strings attached, and we deny the ones that we don't. You know, if that, does that kinda answer your question? I don't wanna try to talk in circles, but we take the money, we may get it because somebody's gonna get it anyhow. We'd just rather take it without the strings attached. So, we, we don't go in, the, go ahead.
Some of them I would love for you all to look at. We're currently trying to get our $312,000 for the school resource officer. I will tell you this, Chris Twichell and even Greg Hasty has pulled their hair out trying to get this satisfied with the feds. I have talked to Chris. We have decided that we will not go back after that grant. What a shame. What a shame. But that is gonna fund our schools so they don't have to pay for a school resource officer. You have no idea the difference that makes in our school systems and our communities. However, when they put so many restrictions just to draw the money down, it's ridiculous.
Well, what he's, what he's talking about restriction wise, it's just, they gave us this grant, but they gave us no guidance on how to get it all set up. So, I've literally pulled what hair I have out, just trying to call, and of course, it has just expounded the problems with the federal government because they're all shut down. We're not. We're still here every day making phone calls. They're all remote learning, remote doing whatever they're doing. So, everything I do is via email or via telephone if I can get it, because I'm a telephone guy. I don't wanna talk to you via email. I need to know for a fact what you're telling me is true, so I wanna hear it from you. There's grants that we do, that we should have taken care of here soon. There's no strings attached, by the way, in that. The only string that was attached on that one is we had to hire a veteran. Checkmark. You know, that was one I could get behind. We looked at body cams, about funding, how are we gonna fund body cams? Because we want transparency, want our community to know what we're doing. We looked at the BJA one. They wanted us to change our policies and procedures and chokeholds and all this junk they wanted in there. And Tony and I talked about it, it's like, you know, the juice isn't worth the squeeze. You know, they're taking away essentially our power to put policies in place in our department, and they're, they're trying to dictate what we're doing. So, we just weren't gonna do it. So, please understand, when we do this, they're, they're all online, I'll be happy to start listing them every time we get them. But they're all online for you to read on them. We're just, we're gonna take what we can get without any strings, if that makes any sense.
Don't let Mother Nature get the best of you. Winter is coming no matter what we do, and the elements can be problematic for your roof, possibly leading to more damage to your most valued assets. Thompson Roofing and Reconstruction can help assist you with all your roofing needs. From residential to commercial, our skilled staff is dedicated to protecting your assets. Let one of our skilled members assist you throughout the whole process with financing options available to qualifying customers. Don't let Mother Nature wreck havoc on your most valuable possessions. Thompson Roofing and Reconstruction, we're here to help.
Court of Appeals ruling that just came down in April that basically hold the federal government with sanctuary cities, which is what we're talking about here, it's a sanctuary ordinance, that you can't force a county to let the federal government violate the 10th Amendment.
You have to, you have to sign on that.
I can get it.
Jimmy and Twichell are leaving, they're having to deal with something on money on the ground.
Greg, while she's looking for that, if I can just say, for me, and I feel like for what I've observed and listened to from the stream today, that the bottom line is is that are we gonna be brave and lead the way? And are we gonna take a stand for freedom? Or are we gonna be limp rested and just kind of say, "Well, whatever the federal government says, you know, we'll just take it." And I read James' original document, and it was brave, and it was strong, and it said, you know, "Come here and take it. Come and take it from us, you can't." And I've read the second document, and it says, it is a document written out of fear. Fear what? What if they come for us? What if, you know, what if we do something that they don't like? What if we lose money? What if we lose funding? And you have the opportunity to be brave and to lead the way, to make sure that our county, thank you, James, you have the opportunity, James, to be brave and lead the way and, you know, pave the trail for the rest of the states in Missouri, the rest of the counties in Missouri to put something forth that other counties can adopt. So, I would hope that we choose, and I realize that it could cost some money. You know, my choice, and I think these people say, if you choose to be brave and it costs us a little bit of money versus, and we are free, make that choice versus if you choose to put something forth that's limp rested that doesn't do anything to protect our freedom and we become slaves.
I just wanted to say, you know, if we do lose federal funding, there's no way that we're gonna let our sheriff's department go without what they need. We will rally together, especially in the day and age of private crowdfunding, GoFundMe and things like that. We'll get them what they need. So, I don't want that fact that we might lose federal funding to limit what we're doing here.
Never be about the money.
Amen.
If I could throw one last thing, and I agree 100% with what you're saying, in that the original document, very simple, very clean, and one of the key things that I've seen in the research I've done, the places where you put in a clean document like that, one county steps forward. Like I say, Illinois has got 22 of them now. You're gonna talk about cutting off federal funding, we're gonna have to cut it off to 22 of them in Illinois. In, in Virginia, the same thing happened. If it's a clean document, cut, you know, it basically is tied to the state and the federal constitution.
All of them, I showed it to all of them and they were all interested in it. Passing it today, actually.
Somebody's gotta do it first.
Really quick, can I go back to the vaccine wording, just like with the business with the COVID-19? I don't think that we should be mandated to have anything injected into it against our will, and that our protection there should also be enacted because just from a personal standpoint, my entire little nuclear family has been genetically tested, and we are actually susceptible to toxicity, and we cannot detox the things that are in the vaccines, and we are at higher risk of developing diseases or even dying from having things injected. And I want protections for my family, and I want protections for everybody that feels the same. Yep?
Okay. Sean?
The 5.3 million we got from the federal money, our federal money is this last whatever. Why do we accept though that this is the attitude of not taking money from the federal government? I mean, they gave us money and we spent it.
There was no strings attached to it.
This time, right? Yeah.
Well, I mean, flat out, there were no strings attached to it.
It was kinda a weird thing.
And we had a conversation about, well, do we use the money or not? And the guy from the state told us, "Well, you got one or two choices here. You can either take that money and do something good for counting with it."
But we know that that's not true, that that money came from somewhere.
Wasted on somebody else.
But that money came from somewhere. Us. So, you can, you can say one thing or the other, but we're still paying for it. Like, however you wanna.
Well, we're gonna have to pay for the rest of the nation that's shut down too.
Amen.
All those businesses are broke and we'll have to pay for it.
Real quick, just a question, anybody lose money because they had to shut down their business? I had to shut down my business, I lost money. I lost people.
Lost a lot of money.
You wanna shut down again?
But what is the hospital saying right now? The hell, you know what I mean? Like, why are they sending us these messages and we're giving them money to fund, like, to put the messages out if we don't believe in it? We're already doing it. Like, why aren't we stopping now?
In April, when all this stuff came down, actually probably in March, when this stuff was coming down the pipe, no one knew what we were dealing with. We seen on the news what was happening in Italy. We seen on the news what was happening in New York City. And from the perspective of the two commissioners that are here now that had to make those decisions, our view was kind of, "Well, let's give this 30 days and find out what happens and then we'll open up." And our view was, at the end of 30 days, one or two things was gonna happen. Either it would look like that they were wrong with their numbers and we could just go ahead and see what, we could take our risk with the economy opening up, or if it was as bad as they said at the end of 30 days, we weren't gonna need any more ordinances because everybody wouldn't be leaving their house if it was that bad. So, we made that choice at the beginning of last year.
They told us to expect as many as 2,000 to 3,000 deaths. And one of my major concerns was that I didn't, you know, a tourist area lives and dies by its reputation. So, one of my major concerns was that we became, we would become known as a hotspot, especially with so many people coming down early in the spring. We had lake homes filling up in, like, March, April, that normally don't, because people normally don't come down till June or July. So, we passed a public health ordinance, we went along with the state. So we passed the public health ordinances, we went along with the state. And the numbers in the beginning were coming, were doubling very fast. We were getting COVIDs, the number of COVID cases, every four hours or so. Then we got up to 26 cases, and it stayed right there for like two weeks, two and a half weeks. And then the next 10 cases were all somebody living with someone that already had it. So we knew at that point that the spread of the virus within our community had stopped, or virtually stopped. And it was obvious by that point, too, that what they had told us to expect thousands of deaths, it's not going to happen. It's the same as the immediate danger they told us it was going to be. So in one fell swoop, we were sending all our public health ordinances and basically simply told them to business. And we refused to pass any more ordinances the rest of the year. And as the year went on, it just became more and more apparent that what they told us is not true. Because we were open for business all summer. We had, instead of the 2 to 4 million visitors we usually had, we had, what, 9 to 10, something like that? And our numbers still stayed well below the national average, even below the state average. So, but it was really stressful there in the beginning because we had all the, we had the state and all the local health authorities telling us that it was like an apocalypse coming. And thank God, it ended up not being anything like that.
I would agree, being on the other side of that, you guys were very brave where others were not. So I applaud you for that. That was great.
Two weeks, the two weeks after Memorial Day, we knew, we actually knew about two weeks before Memorial Day that we were intending to be open because we had to notify all the major restaurants. You need to order food, you need to hire staff, we're opening up. So we knew it was going to happen. But that two week period after Memorial Day, when we were on the national news, if it had gone south, it would have went south with our local populations. And it's easy, it's easy to sat and second guess this. But when my good friend died telling me to stay open, that's tough stuff. When your friends die, I didn't want to be the guy that watched all of my friends die because of my decisions. I stick by that 30 days, and at the end of the 30 days, I stick by that, too. Something else is going to come down the road sooner or later. And to be honest with you, most of what I'm seeing here corresponds with what my dad said when I asked him in 2007, what did people do back then? And he said, Greg, he said, the government can't do anything about that stuff. You either, when something like that comes through, which this is not the first time. I'm a student, I do family history research, and I found out a lot of things that happened in like the 1880s, the pandemic then. I researched several pandemics where tons of people died. And it's happened again and again and again in our nation's history. My dad said, well, back then, we just went on about our business, and you either lived or you died. And everybody was comfortable with either living or dying. Because we're, you know, everybody in this room here is at least reasonably, you know, mostly probably over 30, you know. Seventy or eighty years from now, everybody in this room is going to be dead. And it ain't going to make any difference except for our children and grandchildren. Most of what you're talking about here, I agree with. And my buddy, that one that I was just tearing up about that died, he said, Greg, you have to stay open. He posted some Facebook posts about the difference between how that virus could tell the difference between going to Walmart and going to church. I mean, that was his last post. And less than two weeks after that post, he was dead. I went to that funeral, there was probably 150 people there. And two folks, elderly folks were wearing a mask, and no one else was. That's been the general consensus of the folks that live here now. But there's a big difference between being out in public and having a center and make those decisions. And we're in a position, the three of us now, to have to make those decisions.
We'll stand by you for it.
I'm comfortable with most, most everything that's in this, I'm comfortable with. I'd like to get cleaned up and see if we can do something the right way.
By in this, you mean the original ordinance or the revised version?
Are we restricting you guys?
Well, the one James just read, there's two things, resolution and an ordinance. You made, did you make a motion to pass the ordinance?
Yeah.
We want the ordinance to stand in the way.
That's the second amendment, gun sanctuary, and then the ordinance. At least it's on paper, saying this is who we are, this is what we believe. And yeah, we do need to clean some of it up. Because like she said, calling it COVID-19 isn't probably the best language because who knows what it'll be down the road.
Is this something that we can get done today?
Well, I think, I think, I mean, if we're going to clean it up a little bit, I think we put it on for...
We need to clean it up before we pass it, but...
I mean, we can put it on for, can we get it done by Thursday?
I don't see, that second amendment thing, I think we can pass it right now.
I'd entertain a motion.
Do you have a motion?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve number 11 of the resolution introduced by James Gohagin, that individuals shall have the right to keep and bear arms in defense of his home, person, and personal property.
Hold on a second. That's not it. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. This is what I read earlier. I can't get it to pull up on here, but...
Yours is the one about concealed weapons?
That's in the resolution. And that's where we were having to disconnect the ordinance, SAP, SAPA, Second Amendment, gun sanctuary. All federal acts, laws, orders, rules, and regulations, whether past, present, or future, which infringe on the right, the people's rights, bear arms as guaranteed by the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. And Article 1, Section 23 of the Missouri Constitution shall be invalid in this county, shall not be recognized by this county, or specifically rejected by this county, and shall be considered null and void and of no effect in this county. Such federal acts, laws, orders, rules, and regulations include, but are not limited to, the provisions of the Federal Gun Control Act of 1934, the provisions of the Federal Gun Control Act of 1968. Section C, any levy, any tax levy, fee, or stamp imposed on firearms, firearm accessories, or ammunition not common to all other goods and services which could have a chilling effect on the purchase or ownership of those items by law-abiding citizens. Any, I mean, you can't, it's hard to get ammo right now. Any registering, any registering or tracking of owners of firearms, firearm accessories, or ammunition which could have a chilling effect on the purchase of ownership or of those items by law-abiding citizens. Any act forbidding the possession of, or ownership, or use, or transfer of any type of firearm, firearm accessory, or ammunition by law-abiding citizens. Section D, this is the last part. Any act ordering the confiscation of firearms, firearm accessories, or ammunition from law-abiding citizens. And that's the Second Amendment Preservation Act, gun sanctuary, that's what.
Go ahead and make that as a motion, then.
Well, wait a minute, we, do we have a paper copy? Can we get a paper copy of what we're talking about here so that we have something to enter into the minutes?
Yeah, I sent it to you guys. Final revision, that's the part I sent to you guys. I don't have a paper, I don't have a printer right now. So it's not hooked up to the computer.
That's what I need, that one law.
Did you read it to the record? Is that not worth, just what you did, read it to the record and just that?
Actually, I want a paper copy if we're going to make a motion.
And did not just make a second to what he just, he did? So has it not just been resolved? Can we email this to somebody and have a printer out?
They're doing it right now.
They're already doing it.
Well, let's get a paper copy.
I don't know, is it under support?
Just, yeah, just, let's, I want to just sit back and get the paper copy. So if we make a motion and we got a second and we vote on it, that we've got a piece of paper in front of us. That way, it'll get entered into the minutes and then we'll, with regard to the rest of this and the overall thing, I think we would like to maybe look at cleaning this up. And maybe by Thursday, put it back on the agenda. You know, it's a little bit of crap shoot here. Jim, I mean, what, my point of view on this is, we have to change something later, change something later.
I'm going to go write in this all.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, all you folks are here. I just sent you a, get a piece of paper. Because I am anticipating, and I hope that it doesn't happen, and I'm anticipating that the discord in our nation is going to get worse, not better. I'm saddened by what I've seen over the last, the course of the last couple of years. I don't know what the outcome is, but I got a pretty good idea. It is not going to be good. I pray that something changes in our nation. But the financial load has been placed on our nation with regard to all these states closing down businesses. When that comes home to roost, I'm not sure the legs of this nation can sustain that weight. Yes?
With everybody, I'm sure in the room already knows this, the only way the government can control us is through fear. And if we are, as, I have family that live in California. They will not leave their home. If they go to a restaurant at all, they have to wear their mask the whole time. Lift it up, take a bite, and put it back on. They can't even go out in their yard to walk their dog at times because they're afraid of people coming to tell them that they have to get off the street or off the... And when you live in a city, you don't have much room to walk your dog except up and down the streets. So when you live in fear, then you buckle to the government. And that's the one thing I know that here in Camden County, what I've seen, I am just so proud of our county. I mean, there have been times we talked about moving to be closer to our children, but we're not going to move because our county is strong, and we believe in our freedoms.
Like I tell you right now, the house next to us rents all the time, just like you said, in March and April. We had people coming from Illinois, Iowa, Kansas, Nebraska. And they come in and they say, we go to a restaurant, we haven't been to one in four months. Really? Bottom line is, we have a reputation. And the bottom line is, you might as well go ahead and pass this because nation-wide, I hate to tell you guys, you're already been branded as the county that's free. That's why the people are coming here.
And look where it does, man.
Passing these things, all it's going to do is just reinforce what everybody, all the other states around us are thinking. So you want to see another bumper here?
Pass this now?
A good PR man reads the crowd, reads the town, reads the county. I mean, I'd say most of the opinions in this room are pretty representative of the majority.
I think the opinions in this room are the same opinions that are sitting up here, dude.
That's what I'm saying.
So is there any way to actually move this forward faster than by Thursday? Because what's preventing it from getting revised? It sounds like it's fairly minor tweaking to be able to get it to where it needs to be.
You want to make sure that they do it legally. You want to make sure the meetings are properly noted. You don't want somebody from the outside coming in and telling you.
Problem with I have is that I didn't, I was expecting a discussion of this. And that's why we put it on our other business, to hear what people wanted.
We just had the school actually put a mask ordinance in place that wasn't even on the agenda. There was a motion made, and it actually passed, so we've seen it done recently.
I would prefer to set an agenda item, have this as a matter of an agenda item, and vote on it in open session.
But they just did. They made, he made a motion, Don seconded it. So I guess we don't understand.
We tried to revise the revision.
We're talking about the ordinance.
You're talking about SAPA, right? Yeah, you passed SAPA.
Yeah, they're passing SAPA, but as far as the rest of it goes, as far as the rest of it goes, I think what we're going to do is take the COVID-19 law which...
And it's just a matter of minor tweaking. I don't understand why it's, that should take days.
Isn't this the same thing the school board did? Pushed it through?
I think we're missing it.
Well, no, they didn't even have anything on the agenda about masks. It's not...
But they pushed it through.
They did a motion, and they got it right through, and apparently that's legal. So I guess this should be, too.
The peacefulness and tranquility you get from sleeping through a night's rain can be refreshing. Or a nightmare. Don't go insane. Call your friends in the roofing industry, Thompson Roofing and Reconstruction. Whether it's residential or commercial, we have an experience and knowledge to get the job done. Call us and have one of our Hague-certified staff members assist you with your roofing needs. Visit us online anytime at ThompsonRoofing.us, or give us a call.
Have you got?
I said it's a year old, but I don't know what's in it.
What? No, James, I'm sorry. Yeah, they changed both sides. I'm going to read this whole thing right now. Resolution. No to all by these presents, now on this blank day of blank, 2021. The County Commission for Camden County met in regular session to discuss, review, and formally adopt a formal policy for Camden County addressing individual rights and freedoms of the citizens of Camden County, Missouri. Thereupon, on motion duly made, seconded, and passed, the following resolution was adopted, resolved, that individuals possess a certain basic rights and freedoms, whether expressed in the U.S. Constitution or the Missouri Constitution, and further resolved that the County Commission recognizes the following individual rights and freedoms, that all government rights originates from the people. Two, all persons have natural right to life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, and the enjoyment of the gains of their own industry. Three, that all persons are created equal and entitled to equal rights and opportunity. Four, that all individuals have a natural, indefeasable right to worship the almighty God or not according to their own consciences. Five, that no authority can control or interfere with the rights of religious freedom and conscience. Six, that no person can be compelled to erect, support, or attend any place or system of religion. Seven, that no law can be passed impairing the freedom of speech, but every person shall be responsible for the abuses of this freedom under principles of libel and slander.
That's the one I was saying.
Why is that necessary?
Why is that?
That seems unnecessary.
Straight from libel and slander.
Yeah, and we were just kind of doing the Second Amendment part because there's things...
Libel and slander is already...
Go ahead.
I want to read through this whole thing because we're going to set an agenda item on this in the very near future. We're going to pass some today, but this thing... We're going to pass some today, but this thing, um, okay, I am, I was on.
The libel and slander is striking that.
Okay, right there.
Just wait after freedom of speech.
Okay. Eight, well, I'm gonna start with seven again. That no shut, law shall be passed impairing freedom of speech. Eight, that individuals have the right to peaceably assemble for their common good as they so deem. Nine, that no individual shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Ten, that no individual shall be, uh, that individual shall not be, that individual shall be secure in their persons, papers, homes, and effects from unreasonable searches and seizures. Eleven, that individuals have the right to keep and bear arms in defense of their home, person, and property. Twelve, that private property shall not be taken for public use without compensation.
That is one I, I thought, that's probably very obvious, I don't need that in there, but.
I'd just say, hey.
Okay.
Because that's where a lot of trouble stems from, like on those thirteen hundred homes. Individuals have the right to refuse directives or recommendations to take any vaccine associated with COVID-19. I don't have a problem with that.
But can we take out the mask now for COVID-19 and just make it a vaccine?
Yeah. I do have concerns about whether or not that is legal. I would like to have some advice with regard to that.
Bill made a really good point about, you know, vaccines, about two weeks ago, I believe.
I did.
Polio vaccines in particular, remember what you said about?
Sure, when I was a kid, we had polio vac, vaccines. Nobody disputed the polio vaccine because polio was a terrible debilitating disease. So, we're not against vaccines.
It says vaccines back then, though, were a little.
We're for personal choice.
Yeah.
It should be some choice whether to inject them, right? But it was something that has risk involved in it, or it's risk of a choice.
There is no legal precedent to say you can force people to take a vaccine, that has to govern. There's one rule in Massachusetts back in the day, but that was like eighteen something.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just not sure on the constitutionality of that. I'm just not sure.
I'm not sure the constitutionality of being injected with anything.
I covered up for the first mother. And they're talking about, like, now you can't travel.
This is one of these things I would like to at least have someone look at.
James, Ron Calzone just called me. Dave Rowland actually wrote the language that you presented. He's one of the most premier candidates, that's his language that you presented to the county. Ron Calzone's the capital right now, working on SAPA, that's his language, it's exactly verbatim. He's the one who did it.
Item fourteen, no business, church, or organization can be shut down due to COVID-19.
Probably need to.
You have a right to own business, and you must do process to use it, that's a constitutional right regardless of the reason.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
The broader our liberties are, the better.
Yes.
Let me just go through the rest of this, get it, get it all. I've got a question about number fourteen as well. Uh, we want to probably look at that. Fifteen, the Health Department Director is not an elected physician, and the Health Department as a whole is not law enforcement. They make recommendations but do not have the authority to police businesses or track individuals concerning COVID-19.
Yes, amen. Or any, or not.
Yeah, I don't know.
There's gonna be a lot of that language.
The problem is, our school is quarantined two hundred kids at a time, and they're telling us it's the Health Department that's making that choice. That's what we're up against, they're hiding behind the Health Department and saying, they're telling us, she's on the school board, she can tell you that. They are totally telling.
We and I have a conversation about that.
Tell them.
You and I have a conversation about that, and you assured me that the school would not be taking directives from the Health Department, and we are.
Yes, that's what they told them.
The sheet that's sent home with kids that are quarantined says it's from the Health Department.
Okay, that's not what we were told by the Health Department.
Very difficult for parents, I mean, I've had.
The, the Health Department's exact wording was, uh, we are not going to give them any directives. They are a board, they have to make their own decisions. We will make a recommendation, but only the board of that school and the staff.
Is it the local Health Department or the state?
Jackie Gann.
I will get a sheet from, from someone who's been quarantined that comes from the Health Department.
And I recall that you, his parents said at the recommendation of the Health Department, we are quarantined, and that's what they always say. So it's not as, you know, they're making their, the school board, you get a school report.
I actually have an email directly from B, and which we've got, we, and it says, that email says, "We are only making recommendations, we are not making any orders." And only the school board can decide what they're gonna do. They have the final authority. That, I mean, I've written, I'm guaranteed.
That's not how they're playing it, they're hiding behind the school board, and they're in charge of the, the Health Department, they're hiding behind the Health Department. That's why this reservation is so important, because they're using the Health Department as a reason.
Okay, let me get through the rest of these. Uh, the Camden County Commission does not have or plan to enforce a mask mandate now or in the future. Seventeen, the Sheriff's Office is the highest.
Law in our land.
The Sheriff's Office is the highest law in our land and will not be required. I'm sorry, that one's bad. The Sheriff's Office is not the highest law in the land, they are enforcement. The highest law in our land will be the judges.
It's not the Constitution.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri and the United States.
Put that.
That works.
Yeah.
Well, this one, okay, look, this one needs to be fixed because the Sheriff's Office is strictly enforcement of law. They are not the highest, they're not actually not any law, they're law enforcement. So that one's gonna need to be fixed.
Actually, technically, they're the highest, they are the lead law official for the county, truly. I think that's what he was trying to get at, but he failed miserably. Because if the FBI shows up, they are still subservient to that.
I would have, uh, accepted any input from.
Yeah. Okay, Camden County leaves in autonomy, your body, your choice pertaining to vaccinations. I got a question on that one because I believe there are some laws enforced at the state and federal level that I'm concerned about.
That's what I want to talk about against.
Okay.
Sir, when we did send you a letter, there's a group of community citizens who sent you a letter, it was just sent out last afternoon, yesterday afternoon, I don't know if you've received it or not, in your emails or not.
I saw it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it goes through the whole thing showing how it is, you know, we have a right to our bodily autonomy, it should be personal choice with all these things, and a law in place that proves that.
Nineteen, no businesses shall face rep, legal repressions from the conduct of business due to a COVID-19 shutdown, I definitely agree with that. Okay. Uh, the next thing we got, uh, that's basically, that is the, basically a policy statement of the county. The next thing we got is ordinance, S A P A.
That's what James read, right?
Yeah, the Second Amendment, gun sanctuary.
Okay.
What's passed there?
Uh, okay, I'm gonna read it.
Oh, he already read it once.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, this is what you read in full.
Yeah, yeah, you can read it again if you want.
No, that's. Okay, so, listen.
Wait, 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 I want to get this up, this is gonna be great.
Okay.
Let's go read it again, I'll get the other.
I would entertain a motion with regard to the S A P A Second Amendment Gun Sanctuary.
Wait, can you read that?
I would entertain a motion with regard to the ordinance, S A P A Second Amendment slash Gun Sanctuary.
Go ahead, Tom. You're hungry. Alex, no, let's wash our differences right here, because this will be a good way to go.
Okay, I will, I will make the motion to approve. We done been agreed. I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance, S A P A slash Second Amendment slash Gun Sanctuary ordinance.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we got that one in. Um, I told the folks from Lake Expo that we weren't planning on voting today, oops.
We'll get over it. But what happens tomorrow, time is of the essence.
Um, I think probably we're going to dig into this thing this afternoon, um, maybe Thursday? I haven't been paying attention to any local or national news at all, folks, I don't know.
Biden's on tomorrow.
No, I don't know much of anything that's going on.
Need to pass it in before it's in the air.
I, it isn't, personally, I don't think they're gonna get a damn thing done for months, so.
Well, Thursday. A week, a week would be, I mean, yeah, Thursday would be.
It needs to be retitled.
This is from the Health Department, it will send this to you, this is what the school is.
Yeah, Charlie, you're right, it needs to be retitled and separated. I need it unsigned, unsigned, folks, we're going to retype this as a separate thing with regard to the, uh.
It'll, it'll still be signed effective today.
Yeah, it's effective right now.
It's been separated.
We're gonna separate it out, put it on a separate sheet of paper, and sign it because we've already voted on it, approved it, and it will go into the minutes of the county permanently. Okay. All right, um, we do have one more thing, just a short, sweet one here, uh, with regard to the inspection, inspections on the commission building. The city has agreed to come up and look at our building, so we're gonna have them go through it, uh, figure out anything that we need to do that might need to be changed, and make those directions. So, we're just, we hadn't heard from them yet, we just heard they're coming.
No, we got, I think they did it at ten o'clock today.
Yeah.
Really? Okay. Never mind. Already there, all right. So, we, uh, we all got together last week and invited them to come, so. At any rate, uh, that means there's nothing else on this agenda. Anyone else before we close, have anything? Tony, you're gonna be comfortable with what we've done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I talked to Tony before, and he said, he's probably the most extreme Second Amendment right person in this county, so.
I want to, I want to thank all of you for your spirit of cooperation. This is the way government is supposed to operate.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Those in favor?
Aye.
We're in adjourn.
Go get some food.
Meet you there? Yeah.